That's twice. Good evening, everybody. I'm Lee Snyder. I'm the principal here at North Webster Elementary. Good to see you. It's good to see your faces. Some of you, it's been a long time since I've seen your faces. Welcome back. It's good to have you here. So really looking forward to the evening and hearing from Dr. Troyer. I won't talk very long. Please welcome Dr. Troyer.
This is the only time I've got a round of applause since we've been doing this. So thank you. I appreciate it. Absolutely. Well, hey, I'm double mic tonight because I've got audio coming through the speakers here. We've got audio going through the live stream. We're live streaming on YouTube at the moment. So if there is anyone later that has a question or comment, that is also a double mic situation. But we'll get to that piece here a little bit later. I really appreciate your willingness to come out and chat with us tonight. This is our fourth stop, the last stop of our series of town hall meetings that we put together to really get feedback from the community during this transition phase of my moving into the role of superintendent here at Wawa C. So I appreciate your willingness to be here to engage in conversation with us as we get some feedback from you and try and figure out really what's a priority for you as a community, you as families, and how we can use that information to help us set the course moving into the future at Wawa C. So thank you for being here. The first part of the evening is really just an opportunity for me to introduce a little bit about myself and also talk through some of the goals and priorities that I have for the short-term beginning stages of my new role as superintendent. And then, as we get to the second part, really giving you the opportunity to give some feedback. And we've got four questions that I've asked every group that I've met with, and so we'll go through what those four questions are, give you a chance to provide some input on that, as well as answer any questions that you may have. And so that's really what the evening is about as we get started. So this is my family to start out with. My wife Brittany is a nurse practitioner. She works in the ER in Goshen, in Mishawaka, and in Plymouth. We have two daughters, Caitlin and Harley, and they are wonderful. We have thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed really getting into the Wawa C community. Many of you know that before coming to district central office, I was a principal at Milford for a couple of years. I had a chance to follow Mrs. Kaiser there, who had served as principal for many years, and that was a really cool opportunity. It was a chance for me to work in a K to 8 environment, which was new to me at the time. So that was a real blessing to be able to have that opportunity to work with some grade levels that I hadn't worked with prior to that. I was an assistant principal at a high school for seven years, and before that I was, I taught Project Lead the Way. The pre-engineering part of Project Lead the Way, they have a couple different venues in Project Lead the Way now. So I was in the engineering piece, and I did that for seven years. So seven years as a teacher, seven years as assistant principal, two years as a principal, and then made the move to central office, where it's been a total whirlwind working through this year of COVID. That's been absolutely a challenge, but it's been a really good experience up to this point. So I'm really excited to be your next superintendent and really have enjoyed the time that I've had getting to know you, getting out in our three communities and into our schools and meeting some folks. So I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that. I'm like right on the edge of it being too far away. Perfect. Thank you. So a couple things I want to talk through, some of my values and priorities as a leader. I think it's important to understand where I'm coming from as that kind of sets some of the direction for where we're headed. So first, all can grow. This is really, this is kind of based on a common value that many have in education, and that's all students can learn, which we firmly believe that we can grow children. In addition to that, we work with a lot of adults, not only in our organization, but also with the families that we serve. And I firmly believe that we can help all of the people that we serve in our organization grow. I'm a big fan and believer of Carol Drex's work with Growth Mindset. I think that we can continue to move not only academically, but also socially and emotionally as we prepare students for the next steps of their lives. Second value that I have is integrity matters. This is really critical to anybody serving in a leadership position. That ability to be able to trust what a leader is saying and doing and prioritize integrity is something that's important to them, I think, is critical for anyone serving in a leadership position and certainly the superintendent being in that as well. I don't know where my screen just went. There we go. Take care of people. We're a big organization. We've got just under 3,000 students. We've got another 400 staff members that we serve in addition to all the families that we work with. It's our duty, I feel, as a school in a community, to take care of those that we serve, not only our students, but also our adults and our families. So that's really important to me as we get started in this new direction for Wawa C. And I want to make sure that we're taking care of people and doing so with great customer service, which is something that's come up time and time again as I have talked and we have had feedback. The next value that I have is to focus on success. Really important that I think we take a critical look at where we're at, not only academically, but also from an individual and a school basis, taking a look at what the success of those individual entities are. So what does it mean to be successful for us as a school corporation? What does it mean for North Webster Elementary to be successful? What does it mean for second grade or fifth grade to be successful here? What does it mean for your individual child to be successful? How we define that is going to look a little bit different at each of those levels. And then that extra piece of celebrating those successes, that's something that we can really continue to grow in here at Wawa C as we celebrate the things that we do well, which are many. And we want to make sure that we're putting that information out and telling our story in such a way that people know what's going on and see the good work that we are doing. Finally, communication is key. I think this is really, really important. It's been something that I have set from the very beginning of my time here in this new position is that we are going to communicate well, and we're going to communicate strategically. And we're going to make sure that we are establishing venues and channels for there to be two-way communication. We do a pretty good job at sending information out. We've got a lot of different ways that we do that, social media, email, parent square, et cetera. One of the things that I would like to continue to improve on is getting information back from you as we work together and build those partnerships with our families and with our community. So communication for me is really critical. It's going to be a foundational component of the work that I do. And I think, to be quite honest, it's an area that we want to continue to excel in or push towards excellence in as we look to the future. Some priorities that I have from a superintendent leadership perspective. The first one is instructional leadership. So some jargon that we have in education is being a strong instructional leader means focusing on instruction, on academics, on quality curriculum, on strong instructional practices, coordinating and providing unity among all of our buildings as we work through a very high-quality academic plan for students. So that would be the instructional leadership component of that. Building and managing great relationships is really, really important, I think, especially for the superintendent position as we look to try and bridge together what's happening in each of our five buildings with the things happening in the community, with our community organizations, our service organizations, et cetera. So trying to advocate for Wawa C through those relationships that we build, I think, is key to the role that I serve. Finally, strong strategic planning. I've already mentioned strategic communication. I really want to be purposeful about the work that we do in setting a vision and a course for our school corporation. I think that's going to be really important. Quite honestly, it's something, at least in the time that I've been here, that we haven't done, that we probably need to do a better job at. And this whole process, this two months that we've spent in January and February doing these town hall meetings and this listening and learning phase where we've really spent digging into finding what people are passionate about and what they're interested in and where they want to see our direction. This is helping us gather the data that's necessary for us to set a strong strategic plan that carries us forward for the next five years. So we're going to take all the information that's learned through these sessions. We'll identify what those big themes are to come out of that work, take a look at that becoming some goals, and how do we set metrics to identify whether we're moving towards accomplishing those goals. So that whole strategic planning process will take place this spring and into the summer as we roll out a new strategic plan for the start of next school year, which really gives us direction for the next five years or so. So those are some values and priorities for me as I get started in this role. There we go. My vision for Wawa C, and I've said this over and over again, and I don't want it to become cliche because it has the opportunity to if we let it. But my vision really is to become a premier school corporation in northern Indiana. If you close your eyes and you think about what you consider to be the best school corporations in this part of the state, I want Wawa C to enter your mind as we move forward. That's really what the work that we're about to do is all about. Now, it sounds very easy to say we want to become a premier school corporation, and the work is actually going to be very difficult to do that. But I think that we've got the pieces in place, the resources here, to really move towards that vision. One of the ways that I think that we're going to become premier is through the professional learning community process. We refer to that in education as PLCs. So we have to become very instructionally focused. We have to take on the framework or use the model of professional learning communities to build a renewed emphasis on accountability, growth, and school improvement. I think only when we acknowledge where we're at and we identify where we want to go, and then we hold ourselves accountable, only when those things happen can we move towards being premier. And again, I say this at the risk of becoming cliche, but one of our school board members, Mrs. Lynnameyer, has said, and I've heard her say it over and over and over again, and I've never heard it before she said it, and I think it's really something that we want to look towards. She said she wants Wawa C to be the Disney of schools. And I think that's a really cool way to think about what we're looking for. When I talk about being premier, we want to be on that level with great customer service, high academics, great support programs in place, and those kinds of things as we support the students and families in our community. So that's my vision as we move forward. Man, I'm just on the edge of being too far away. Some goals that I have, these are really kind of short-term goals from now until June, like the first six months or so of this new work that I'm doing. The first one is to listen and learn. That's been, I feel like, all I've been doing the first couple of months that I've been in this position. I've met with nearly all of our staff in our buildings. I'm meeting with parent groups this week. I'm meeting with some students later this week at Wawa C High School. Certainly the community forums and the town hall meetings. Those have been all part of this listening and learning phase of entry into this role. The second one is to strengthen our board relationship. I'm very appreciative of having a great school board, and I'm looking forward to continuing to strengthen that. Mr. Fisher and Mr. Wilson are here tonight as representatives of the board. And I think it sends a great message when board members and superintendent can be at events and work together as we identify what are our priorities and how do we take our school corporation to the next level. This is going to be critical for us, and I'll talk a little bit more about some board things that we're working on and trying to do here in a little bit. The third goal that I have is to engage in the Wawa C community. One of the things that I will absolutely tell you is that Dr. Eddington was great at getting into the community and becoming a part of many, many different organizations and groups and really serving in that way. I think that is part of his legacy that he leaves for us. And I would like to continue in that same respect, and I want to make sure that we're doing that with a purpose, as I said earlier, to advocate for Wawa C. So we want to use those partnerships that we develop through some of that community engagement to make sure that we're taking care of Wawa C and that we're advocating for the work that we do. The final goal that I have then in the next couple of months is I want to make sure that we're developing and really embedding into all areas of our organization a systematic process of communication. I talked earlier how important this was to me as we've got started, and I really think that that communication piece continues to serve as one of our priorities. We want to make sure that we're communicating well, that we're really making sure that our community understands what it is that we're doing, what the decisions are that we're making, and why. That may be the piece that is maybe the most underrepresented component of this systematic process of communication. I want patrons of our community to look at our school and say, "We understand what the decisions were that were made, and we understand why those were made." And sometimes we haven't done a great job with that in the past, and I want to make sure that we absolutely do that into the future. Thank you, sir. All right. Our greatest strength that we have in this school corporation is our five schools. One of the things that I've learned and I've heard over and over and over again is how much backing our schools receive from the community. Wawa C is a really interesting school corporation because we serve three very distinct individual communities and towns. And each of those towns have their own identity, and their schools that are in those towns very much take on the persona of the town and the community that they serve. Most corporations don't have that where they're bringing together three individual towns. I think that's an advantage for us, but it also provides some challenge because we're having to blend together those unique communities into one school community. So one of the things that I've discovered through my conversations with different people is that the schools that are in our individual communities, for example, the North Webster community very much is supportive of North Webster Elementary School. They identify with North Webster Elementary School. It's theirs, and they protect it. What I want to get to the point that we, as a community of communities, get to is that we're also having that same identity with Wawa C and the big school corporation in general. So not only does North Webster really hold tight to North Webster Elementary, but also to Wawa C Middle School and also to Wawa C High School and our other schools that we have in our organization. I say all that to say, our greatest asset is our schools and our people and our kids and our families that are here. We've got tremendous people in place. We've got great staff, great teachers, great paraprofessionals, great support staff in place in our buildings. And that group is what we need to capitalize on as we look towards school improvement and trying to move towards that vision of being premier. I really think that that's our greatest asset here. I'm not even going to try to click it. Our biggest challenge in my mind right now that's facing us is our declining enrollment. One of the things that I've identified here over the last couple of weeks is that over the last six years or so, we have lost students every single year. the last six years or so, we have lost students every single year, and COVID and the ongoing pandemic did not help us in that situation, but it's also not just a COVID problem. It goes back from before that. So going back to the 2015-2016 school year, we had 3,145 students. That's gone down every year. This year, in the fall, our enrollment was 2,824 students. So that's approximately 340 or so students that we've lost over that timeframe. This is a big challenge for us. We've got to find ways to really address this problem head-on, and we've got to do it, and we've got to do it quickly. We don't have time to continue this downward trend to 2026 where our projected enrollment is 2,500. We don't have time to wait to address that issue, and that's something that we've got to talk about, and we've got to talk about it now, and we've got to talk about it and put something in place quickly to address that issue. So this is one of our biggest challenges. We have just over 250 students that live in the Wawa C school boundary that choose to go to other public schools. That's a big challenge for us. The other side of the equation is we get approximately 150 back. So we lose 250 to other school corporations, and we get about 150 that come our way. School choice in Indiana has opened up this, as much as I hate to say it, a competitive environment where families have the choice to make a decision about what school they want to go to. And so we are losing enrollment, and part of it, I think, is related to that school choice issue. Families are just choosing to go other places. I think also part of it is related to our changing demographics. If you look at our birth information, that's kind of gone downhill following the same pattern, but if we could get some of these kids back, I think that would be very good for us as a school corporation. So this, to me, is our biggest challenge right now, and certainly something that we're going to be taking a look at quickly in the coming months, and something that we've got to really address head-on. All right. That's kind of my talking presentation. I want to give you a chance to provide us some feedback now. So I've asked every group that I've worked with four questions. They've all been the same. What should I know about the Wawa C community? What should I know about your school or situation? What are we doing well and should be sustained? And what are we, what do we need to pay attention to and what could be reevaluated? So really, as we open it up for some feedback and some comments from you, if you want to provide some information on those four questions, that would be great. Also, if you have other questions that you want to chat about, we could do that as well. So I'm going to turn it over to you now. Are you doing Mike? No? If they want to come up.
Mike is there. If they don't want to come up, they can ask questions for them.
Perfect. So if you want to come up and ask your question, that's fine. If you want to ask from your seat, I'll just repeat or summarize your question so on the live stream they kind of hear what you're talking about before we go from there. So anything related to the four questions would be great. Otherwise, if you just have additional feedback or comments or questions, I'll be happy to answer those as well. Yes, sir?
Of the students that we have lost to other schools, do we know why?
That's a great question. No, we don't necessarily know why. I have some ideas, but we've never actually had anybody look at that problem for us, and I think that's something that we need to change. We need, like, we need somebody that gets out of bed every morning and they think about how do we solve this problem, and so that's something that we're taking a look at. In my mind, there are reasons why people would choose to go elsewhere that probably are very practical. Maybe they work in a community, and their childcare is in a community, and it just makes sense that the children attend a school in that community that they're working in and having daycare in. There's also probably reasons that aren't that practical and that we really need to know about. I would love for somebody in our organization to reach out to some of these families and determine what some of those reasons are so that we can begin to put together a plan for how do we attract them back to Wawa C.
I'll add on to Phil's question. Have you benchmarked any of the other districts around us, Waunee, Fairfield, Warsaw? I know several of those districts track this, and the four students leave, and one of them I know they have to talk to the superintendent about why they're leaving. That would give you a significant amount of insight into what's happening near us, maybe not here exactly. Would you talk to any of your fellow superintendents?
I've had lots of conversations with them. I have not had specific conversations related to the processes that they have for tracking those types of enrollment decisions and conversations. I think it's a great idea. One of the things that we've talked about is having some type of exit interview or a way that we can capture some of that data as people are making decisions. That's part of where we need to look at in our plan moving forward. We've got to be able to capture what those reasons are that people are making those decisions and then address that within our schools, and I think that'll be really important for us as we look to the future.
My suggestion would be to find out what's happening near us before wasting too much time to get some answers here.
Sure. Yep. Great suggestion.
I, going to ask one of the questions, but I have a concern, and we won't know this, I don't think, until next year, when we get out of this pandemic thing. If we have students in math, especially science, which is a lot of lab work, they haven't had that experience, they're going to be, I was told not to use the harm. If they don't understand, do you have a plan yet to bring these students up to speed?
Yes. So there's a couple of different things. Number one, we, Mr. Snyder, we've launched the elementary remediation program. Is that going here at this school yet?
It started in the first grade, probably. We have the other grades starting.
Like, within the next week or two? So we've got a remediation program that we put together, and this is an elementary-specific program where we, grade levels have identified some of our most challenged students due to the pandemic that have some of those biggest gaps, and we're bringing them in. It's an eight-week program. They're coming, depending on the grade level, a day a week, two days a week, et cetera, to get some skill development and try and build in some of those gaps that have been created. We're also looking at, and we're just starting the conversation, of what our summer school program is going to look like. We know that we've got kids that have gaps because of the pandemic, and we're trying to figure out ways that we can support them and provide them additional time through some outside-of-the-regular-school-day opportunities, whether that be with this after-school program or potentially in a summer program and that kind of thing. So we know that the gaps are there, and we're working to help those students that have those needs. Yes, sir?
Yeah, we'll come up with a real talent here. So Dr. Troy, you mentioned premier.
Yeah.
Premier for northern Indiana. Are there any schools that you're aware of in northern Indiana or Indiana that you would consider premier as a benchmark?
Ooh.
What's that look like? I know what Disney World looks like, but I don't know what a premier school looks like. Can you tell me what one is around here?
So I'm hesitant to name a specific school corporation because maybe I'll be poked a little bit for saying such-and-such about one of our neighbors, but I'll answer your question more generically. I think having school accountability marks that represent the work that we're doing is really important. So what that means is, like, I think our school letter grade doesn't represent the actual level of teaching and learning happening in our classrooms, but we're not representing ourselves well on some of our state assessments, so we've got some areas to grow in that respect. I would really like us to be having some more premier-like school letter grades than what we're currently at. And also, it's been a challenge because we've had a couple of years now where the state has issued "hold harmless" on accountability, and so we've just, like, we have the same letter grade as we had two years ago, which, that's not, it's not bad that the state has held harmless because of everything that's happened, but I just think that we have some work to do in terms of our academic performance. I want the reflection of the work that we're doing in school academically to be reflected by our school letter grades, by our standing in the community and in the state, and I just don't think we're there yet. I also want to make sure, when we talk about premier, that we are doing everything that we can from a social and emotional learning standpoint. So we found through the pandemic that our kids have more needs than ever, so trying to support their social development and their emotional needs as they work through life and certainly the components that school brings about, I think is really critical. And I mentioned it earlier, too, this whole idea of customer service. Like, I want people, when they pick up the phone to call us, that at the end of the conversation, they hang up the phone and are pleasant, feeling pleasant about the service that we provided, through an interaction even, just as simple as calling up one of our buildings and having a good interaction, or, you know, leaving at the end of a year and feeling positively about the experience that a child had in a classroom with a teacher or with a paraprofessional. So I know I'm being a little elusive on...
Yeah, you have an answer to the question.
I know, purposefully, on not identifying a corporation that I'm modeling us after, but those would be some of the qualities that I'm searching for or that we're shooting for.
But there needs to be a benchmark for premier.
Mm-hmm.
So there's got to be something out there, other than Disney World, to be premier.
Yeah.
So my question, and I'll be curious to see, what are your benchmarks? You mentioned, you know, improvement in grades. I understand. I think that should be.
Yeah.
But there needs to be accountability in that, and where are the benchmarks?
Yeah.
So I'll be curious to see, when you lay out, what does premier mean?
Yeah.
And when other schools in northern Indiana turn around and say, wow, look what Wawa C is doing, we need to contact them and find out what are they doing so we can duplicate that.
Yeah.
Okay? I need to see from you a plan that lays out those benchmarks instead of just the name.
Sure. Yeah, and that's why I said earlier that when I talk about being premier, that has a tendency to be a little cliche. We have to define what that means for us, and that comes through the development of that strategic plan, which I think you'll see as we work on this here later this spring, some of those benchmarks and thresholds that we're shooting for. So we've got to find a way to define what that is and establish criteria that we can look to, to identify, were we successful in moving towards that or not? And that will be part of our plan development. I just don't have all of those specific details for you immediately. I think that's something that we have to work on collaboratively to identify together as a group what that success means.
So you mentioned our school grade, but that is not something like you just pull out of, like, how do we get the school grade?
So the school grades are, it's different for different levels, but K-8 primarily is based exclusively on the state assessment, and there's two parts, really, that make up that grade. There is an achievement component, so just flat-out, how many students, and I'm simplifying this, but how many students meet a certain threshold for a pass versus a fail, so to speak. So 50% of our K-8 school grades are determined by achievement, and 50% are determined by student growth. And every student gets assigned a growth, growth points, I should say, and that gets added up to be a number of, that they attach for the school growing. So you could be, you could be low-performing and high-growth and still be in a decent position. You could be high-performing and low-growth and still be in a decent position, and ultimately, where we want to be is high-performing and high-growth, and that's going to lead to great school letter grades. At the high school level, it's a little bit more complicated because they factor into the grade other measures of success. So, for example, graduation rate is included in the high school letter grade. The amount of students that participate in college and career readiness measures like the SAT and the ACT, those things factor in. Even looking at attendance rates and how many kids are participating in, like, AP and ACP dual-credit-type classes. So I say all that to say, it's easier to be successful at the high school level in terms of a school grade because there's more factors than just the state assessment. At the elementary and middle schools, that's the only thing that counts, is the state assessment. So if you don't do well on the state assessment, then you're done for. So in our corporation, our high school typically is an A or a B, and our elementary and middle schools have been recently like Cs or Ds, because at the high school level, it's easier, I don't want to say easier, the way that the grade is calculated is such that more factors into it than just the state assessment. So, and we're all, it's all the same kids. Our kids that were in a D elementary school are funneling into an A or B high school, and that seems to be a little bit of a perplexing situation.
So who writes the state assessments? Because I remember around 2006, 2010, this, like, statewide, we saw the whole state drop, like, this test scores dropped dramatically. So is, who writes the state assessment, and how does that impact us?
So, did you say, repeat the question?
I can hear you on the live stream.
Sorry. No, I can do it, if I remember. So the question was, who writes the state assessments? There was a change a few years back, a number of years back, and the success or pass rates dropped tremendously. So I, to be quite honest, I don't know who exactly is in charge of writing. I know the state contracts with a test vendor, and that's where we get the assessment. Typically, when they're developing those assessments, they try and include teachers and different other stakeholders from around the state in the development of that content. But you are absolutely correct. A few years back, the threshold, let's say the state average, was much higher than what it is now. So it may be, and I may have my numbers totally wrong, but, like, they were in the mid-70s, let's say, for a state average, and now they're in the mid-50s for a state average. So there was definitely a drop when the state changed assessment tests and platforms. And that's just something that, it's a huge frustration for us, but all of us are having to work within that environment in the state, so I don't know that we're any, we're not disadvantaged or advantaged because of that change. It's just, it's difficult when you get, when you have a pass rate of below 50%, which was one of our, you know, struggles with eighth-grade math, for example, a couple of years ago. And that wasn't just Wawa C, that was the whole state. I think the average was under 50% passing for the whole state, which is a challenge. I think the average was under 50% passing for the whole state, which is a challenge. So. Did that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay.
I just, you know, I think there's a lot that I can learn about the state assessment and our school grade, and I realize that we're all comparable, but I just, I guess I don't know how I feel about who's designing the metrics for us.
Well, if you find that out, you let me know. That would be amazing. Yeah. It, it's, it's something that's very frustrating to people that work in schools.
Well, and to parents who have kids who struggle on tests.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. I understand.
Yep.
Here's one question, what should I know about Wauwasee community? Whether we like it or not, sports ties us all together. We gotta admit, sports ties us all together. I was very disappointed, Wauwasee meeting, you had 15 people there at the middle school last week, last Saturday.
Yeah, there wasn't a ton.
And there's not very many here.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't get much feedback in the Warsaw people. By the way, I quit taking, but I went to Warsaw. Why don't we get the sports programs from Wauwasee? Nobody calls it in. I didn't know that was the school's responsibility, but that was the answer I got, nobody called it in.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting one of these at a halftime?
One of the things that, that we really are trying to figure out, and this kinda goes back to that strategic process of communications, is how can we tell our story better so that we are getting positive press that comes out? That's just something that's not really inherently comfortable for most people in education because they just do their work and it's, like, most teachers do a great job and they don't expect any recognition for it, and they just kinda wanna do their thing. But we have to tell our story. So we have to, if we want positive press in the paper about our athletic programs, then we need to make sure that they're getting the information and, and that we're, that we're contacting the people that need to be contacted to get that story out there to people. That's one of the reasons this gentleman up is, is, is up here tonight, 'cause we've proactively contacted them and said, we've got an event, we, you know, if you come and cover it, that'd be great, so.
The robotic program, I don't really understand what all that is. Somebody sent their stories in, but they have pretty good coverage.
Yeah? Yeah. We've gotta do better at that, for sure.
I got a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
My student is high school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you send, they send out things about how they're going to, the guidance counselors are supposed to meet with the students and everything else. My student is not, and she takes AP classes, things like that. She's an AB student, she's an average. She's not, she doesn't have IEP or anything else. But she gets left behind because of this. Who? And, now, just to add another thing, to, she is assigned a guidance counselor. She has emailed them, I have emailed them. The only time I can get anything back is when I contact them through the principal. So who holds them accountable for what they do and don't do? Because you guys sent out a mass thing saying each student's gonna go see her counselor and everything else to prepare, because she's gonna be a senior. And she's still, to this time, she still does not know what classes she wants to take because of the fact that she knows what career she wants and everything else. But yet, her guidance counselor doesn't have time for her because of the fact that she does not have IEP, or she's not really high up there where she's gonna get everything. So who holds them accountable for their job?
So the question is, who holds our guidance counselors accountable for the work that they do? Or don't do? First off, I apologize for what sounds like a poor experience that you and your daughter have been having. That's, when I talk about customer service, that's not the customer service that we're wanting to have here at Wauwasee. Ultimately, it's the principal, and you've talked about that you've worked through the principal. I just had a conversation with Mr. Walmer this morning, and it was about that exact topic. It's something that we're aware of and we wanna make sure that we're providing better service than what we have been. One of the things that, going back to communication, the, the world of all the requirements and regulations and things that you have to do and boxes that you have to check is growing more and more complicated for students every year at the high school level. And so making sure that we provide information to families in a way that's easy to consume, that they can go back and listen to something again if they missed it, that, that resources are available and easily accessed, that's really, really important to us. We're just starting the evaluation of that. And, and so I hear the frustration that you have when you talk about that, and I want you to know that it's something we're aware of and that we're working on. We, I feel strongly that our customer service in that area needs to improve. So we're working on it. I, it'll take, changing culture is not an overnight thing, and, and so it'll take us some time. But we, we know that there are some things that should be happening without question, and again, I'm sorry that you've had a poor experience, and it's important to us.
But who checks on people, and you're, you're employees basically? That they're doing their job? Because of the fact that you can't expect the principal to be a principal of all those students and also check on those employees? Because it's not only the guidance counselor. I've seen other people that should be doing stuff and not doing it. So who is taking responsibility? Because you, like I said, you can't put it all on the principal.
So ultimately, it is the principal's responsibility to evaluate and assess employees in the building. Like, if you ask Mr. Snyder, he's, he's saying, yes, that's one of my responsibilities that I have to take. And we've got other administrators that are in charge of helping students with different things and managing student issues, but ultimately, it's the principal. And so if you've got frustrations like that, it's really, really, the place to go is to the principal, and Mr. Walmer will work with, with you to get some things resolved. That's the place to go. Yes, ma'am?
I don't know if you can feel better, but I've got a kid on the side of this bedroom, and we got the same grades. So what was the thought? I'm sorry. It's not that she's average, we get the same service too, so I don't know what the magic answer is, but... And I'm from Milford, so I'm not even from Missouri, so we got a different school. I do have a question. And I'll try to speak loudly, but we all, we were talking about measurement and measurement of skills. But one of the reasons we love Milford and we love sending our kids there, because we were one of those families that could go to another school district closer to us. But we chose Milford because we loved the creativity that was in the school, and we loved the caring teachers and the social, emotional things that they were learning. How does that, there, there's no test for that, like emotional intelligence. And when I hired people, I looked for emotional intelligence. I don't look to see that they failed something in 12th grade. So how do we balance that in our school system? So that not only are we doing, you know, the yin and yang of that?
Yeah, so the question was, how do we balance the social and emotional needs of students with the academic needs? This is a great, great question, that there's no easy answer to. I will tell you, in my opinion, I feel like probably in the last 20 years, schools have, have changed immensely in terms of what they're providing from social and emotional learning competencies and the work that they're doing in that respect. So when you have a focus on that component, which is really important, that, there's only so much time in the day, and that takes away from some of the other components. And so really trying to find this balance of how do we support students socially and emotionally? Because we know that i- if students aren't at a good place socially and emotionally, then they're not going to be ready to learn academically. So we need to make sure that we're focusing somewhat on that. But then also, we've got, we can't spend all of our time on that, and we've gotta to look at some academic needs as well. How do we balance it? We try and incorporate things like into our warrior times, where we're providing some social, emotional, emotional support through that time, trying to build some of those community relationships with our staff members throughout the day, but specifically during times where, where teachers have time to meet with kids and get to know them and be able to support them. Now, this year has been an extra challenge on that because of the late arrival with school every day. Then that's taken away some of those times that we can do that. And there's nothing more that I look forward to than we can, when we can get back to our normal instructional day and build some of those times back into the schedule. I think there's not a, a, a magic answer to how do we do that, but there is some balancing act of trying to support students that way and also make sure they're getting their academic needs met. For sure.
I, I have a difficulty producing that version. And part of that is that emotional, you know, you go to Disney and you feel loved, you feel like you're in a place. And I feel that's very important, not to distract them. Because I have friends in different school districts, and they took us through the test, and that's all they do. And their goal is not being premier, they are premier. But I feel like that things like project lead the way and creative thinking and discernment of facts and things like that aren't even encouraged as much overall, not, not here specifically, but...
Sure.
I feel it's just really important. Now, the second question.
Yes.
With all the funding of public schools, every year, there is something in the legislature that says, hey, we're gonna take this away, we're gonna give this money to these people. What can we do as parents to...
To be quite honest, I, I, number one, I appreciate the question. The question was, what can we do as parents to help maybe advocate for schools when it seems like the legislature is constantly trying to redirect dollars? Hopefully, that was a good paraphrasing. From my perspective, the biggest thing that we can do, that you can do, is to talk with your legislators about what's important to you. I, I honestly feel like that's one thing that, that we just as citizens need to do a better job at, is making sure that the people who are voted to represent us are actually representing us. And so that would be my probably biggest response to that. We as school, schools are, like, I'm involved in different professional organizations. Many of our teachers are involved in professional organizations that, that advocate and lobby for the interests of public schools. But I really think that sometimes that scene is just public schools looking out for public schools. And I feel like if our community members would make their voice heard on issues like that, that, that maybe that would get more response than the superintendent's association trying to talk with our local representatives.
Are there, are, are there community organizations in other places that do that? Or we have to do it all from the PTO? Like, you know, it's not the PTO, it's not...
Right.
How do we organize ourselves?
That's a great question. I don't necessarily have... You don't wanna lead it? Yeah, okay, fair enough. I actually think, e- even like our PTO groups, like, we've got some really active PTO groups here at Wauwasee. Like, even some of them going to talk to some of our local representatives would be at least impactful. I haven't heard of that happening, to be honest, very much, so. There you go, thanks.
I did just find that there's an Indiana Coalition for Public Education.
Huh.
You can Google it.
There you go. We have an internet question. Is this our first internet question?
This is our first live question, and it's a... Um, it reads, I have a senior athlete at Wauwasee High School. We have been waiting for months on an answer on the ongoing, from the ongoing athletic office. Can we get any answers on the athletic?
So, senior athlete at Wauwasee High School. We've been waiting for months on some direction out of the Wauwasee Athletic Office and wanting some information on the athletic director. Is that correct? Okay, so I've been asked this question three times out of four. I cannot provide specific details and information about the ongoing issue with, with that position. However, I will say that we, our intention, when we are able to, is to communicate that to you as soon as we can. So I'm hoping that we will be able to provide some clarity on this particular topic to you very soon. There's, there's things that are finishing up and wrapping up. We hear you, we acknowledge your concern, we know it's important to people, and as soon as we're able to, we'll provide some information on that.
Please rephrase your question, we got in good order.
The question was, they have a senior athlete at Wauwasee High School. They've been waiting for months to find out the direction of the athletic director position. Yes, sir?
What's working well and should be sustained? I look at our community and what, what we have here in our community. We have, so agriculture is a big part of our community. So things like FFA, that's working well, and we should maintain and sustain. When I see building trades, I see people that are, you know, involved in construction. And I'll give a great example, is Tyler Kissinger, who grew up in North Webster, went to Wauwasee High School, went to the building trade, got involved in construction, now owns his own business in construction, lives in North Webster, and is building his own house. And we hope that he will have multiple kids that will populate the school.
We do too!
That's what we need. We've got culinary arts, because we have restaurants in this area, and we, they need to be filled. We have Marina School, and we need people to be able to work on our boats. I think, I agree with you that your biggest issue, as well as the school board, is the dwindling attendance in our school corporation. It hasn't had overnight, it's continuing to slide. And the fact is, when you lose those kids, you lose money, and it affects your budget. So I'm just throwing it out, this is my personal opinion. I think we need more affordable housing for our communities. And that is a big area that we, as a group, need to address, is affordable housing. I'm not talking about Lakers, okay? We're talking about affordable housing for people that can work in these industries, in agriculture, into the restaurants, into the manufacturing that surrounds us. But that's why I think we're losing these, these kids. Their families are moving outside of this area because we don't have affordable housing. That's my personal opinion. But in the meantime, the last question, what needs attention to be reevaluated? You're gonna have to sharpen your pencil when you've got lower numbers and lower money to work with. My student, my kids, went to North Webster Elementary, went to the middle school. Those at Syracuse went to the elementary school, went to the middle school. But in Milford, they go to Milford Elementary and Milford Middle School. I'm just throwing it out for a reevaluation, is could it be more efficient if the Milford group sent their middle schoolers to the middle school? And that we could see some savings in that area. I said it, I'm sorry.
That's okay, it comes up all the time. It took me 35 minutes to get here, and I... I, I can't put my kid on the bus. I'm the last, last house in our school district. It's like asking someone here to come up to an avenue. Like, I, I almost have a map in my hand, and I just, somebody had poor plan, like, 30 years ago, you know? But I just, we just can't get here physically. My kid's on the bus already for an hour. My kid's on the bus already for an hour, just going to Milford. I just can't even imagine putting a child on a bus at, you know, for that long of a time. I, I just, it's just, but we wouldn't mind if it was closer, and actually, we would get the one school system, because we sit right between, it's 20 miles to the middle school, and it's 20 miles that way. But, yeah, we were hoping when the school insert, these was built, that maybe that could kind of be something, but, yeah, oh well.
Yep. You bring up a point that's been bantered about for years and years and years here. It's something we're going to have to take a look at and evaluate, and certainly, it presents a challenge for us. And also, I will tell you that just having two middle schools in general presents a challenge for us. When we think about trying to serve the needs of middle school kids in two places, it's a challenge. It's a big challenge for us. I also was wondering, sir, if Mrs. Roberts set you up to say the great things about the FFA program, or? She didn't, okay. Yes, ma'am?
Our kids have gone through, long gone, and I, I, I'm just proud of our school system. You know, our schools, I, I sub, and I'm mostly in this building, but have been, you know, the others, Wauwasee Middle School was my favorite school for my children, you know, as they were going through school. But, you know, all the things that we have at the high school, I just think we have, I think having the middle school choice, where if you want a smaller middle school, you know, for your child, is nice. We chose the, the Wauwasee Middle School for our four kids, and, you know, I just think we have a lot to be proud of and a lot of positive, wonderful things in our, some of the things that Garrett was saying, you know, the different, the FFA and the building trades.
The CTE programs, yeah.
That car, where they build the car.
Supervillage.
I just think we just have a, a lot of positive, wonderful things that kids can, you know, move into, especially like once they get to the high school.
Yeah. Well, I think that goes back to my conversation about our, our greatest strength is our schools, and the things that we do, and our staff that's in place. We want to continue to use that as an advantage for us. We do some great things here, absolutely.
There's always room for improvement, but, you know.
Sure.
I think we're having a good school.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm hearing everybody comment on how great our CTE programs are, the agricultural and culinary. Everybody needs to realize then, right now, there's a bill in the House, it has passed the House, that is cutting that funding to several CTE programs. And if we want those to maintain, if we want to maintain a two and a half teacher ad program, if we want to maintain the supervillage, the culinary program, we all need to get off and on with our legislators now. This is something that's not going to stop unless we all speak up now, and those are programs that, as a community employer, we maintain a lot of students in those programs, and we've got to keep them learning so that they can stay here in our community and do what we need in our communities.
I can't say it better myself. Yep. She's got another one.
With the referendum not passing in November, will this affect the schools next year? We were told we needed this for our resource officers, teachers at our programs, so that many, that many kids rely on.
Question was, with the referendum not passing in November, will this affect our schools next year? We were told that we needed resources for our programs, like our school resource officers and other things. So the answer is complicated. I will tell you that the, the loss of potential revenue to support programs has created a bigger additional challenge for us to try and find creative ways to support the programs that we currently offer. So I just had a conversation with Phil here at the, before we started today. He's writing a grant that we hope, if we get it, will help pay for our SRO salary. So that's something that we have to go out and find, hopefully, an additional revenue source to help support that program. We've been very lucky to fund some of those things, like our SRO program, program through grants, and we'll continue to look for ways to do that, but it creates a challenge for us. And if we don't get those grants, or we've had some positions and some programs that have been supported by grants, that now the grants are gone, then that creates additional levels of burden from a financial standpoint to find ways to support, to continue. And, and that's just the reality of the situation. So we're doing everything we can to try and not have it impact our programming, but ultimately, there may be spots where it is because we can't find some of those revenue sources. We really are doing everything we can. We're, we're trying to, we really want to be able to maintain the services that, that we currently offer. But I will tell you, as you pointed out, when, when we have declining enrollment, that means declining funding. And our, there's two side, two, two big pots in education. I think I referenced it on this handout in that square box, so there's an education fund, an operation fund, and then debt service fund. The debt service fund and the operations fund are funded exclusively, mostly exclusively by local, local property taxes. The education fund is funded almost exclusively through the state basic grant, which is 100% based on enrollment. So you get a certain number that you receive from the state, and you have X number of kids in your school, and you multiply those two numbers together, and that's what you get for your education fund. And the education fund is where we fund our classroom instructors, our teachers, our parent professionals, our principals, our other building-level leaders. The people that work with kids are funded through education fund. So when we think about declining enrollment, that's the reason why it's our biggest challenge right now. Yes?
I just assumed that if I homeschooled your child, that money that would have, should have been going to that school. Like, if I went home to school, I would assume that you were getting my money and I was getting nothing for it, right?
No.
But that's not how it works.
Not how it works.
Is it a general fund?
It, it, it doesn't.
It's not even the education, is it?
It doesn't go, it doesn't come to us at all. So the question was, I always assumed that if I chose to homeschool my students, that the district of residence would still get the money. Wrong. That, that is part of the issue. So we had 89 students this year, between July the 15th and December the 30th, unenrolled from Wauwasee and enrolled, unenrolled to homeschool. 89. We did not get, well, some of those we did, some of those happened after the Fall Count Day, but if they unenrolled to homeschool before the Fall Count Day, then we did not get funding for them. And talking about bills, I think there's a bill in, in the legislature right now to basically route some of that money to you as a homeschool provider.
For the students themselves.
Yeah. So that's out there, but we certainly do not get that as the public school. If they are not enrolled with us, we don't get it. Did you have a question?
If we're about, I'm, I'm concerned about the community support of our school system. Look at the last referendum. Look at the attendance we have here, that we had at the middle school. That's concerning to me. The school has always been the lifeblood of the three communities. But we're losing that for some reason.
I don't disagree with you. I think part of that is that we want to make sure that we're providing opportunities for people to participate in these kinds of events. This year is also a really weird year, trying to hold a town hall meeting in the middle of a pandemic has been a challenge, and, you know, I think, actually, Mr. Snyder said it, like, he was happy to see your faces, this may be the first time that parents have been allowed in North Webster Elementary since we opened the doors in August. Like, that's, so that has created additional burdens on us, which were unexpected a year ago. But I don't disagree with what you're saying. I think our job is to continue to provide opportunities for people to come. I was actually pleasantly surprised we had as many people as we did. And we get people the chance to come out and talk, and they see that we're doing that, and they're interacting with us on.
Online, online?
We have 20 right now online watching the live feed. I think that that will grow, and, and that's an opportunity for us to continue to improve, so. Yes?
I feel like I should tell you, we're not alone, because I was just in a meeting today. Since 1970, the only institution in the U.S. that has a more positive approval rating since 1970, police, government, schools, the only institution is military. They're the only ones that have, like, more positive community support. Everyone else since 1970, we're just, it's like, I think it's a culture in our, in our area.
I would guess, though, that the military's been very, very purposeful in their planning and their positioning of themselves in the eye of the public. So that's something that we can't ignore. But great point.
Just so let you know, I think some of your programs at the high school, or the school that's in use, does its great. For instance, the meat and shot thing today, that they had today, was great. The nurse at the high school sent me a letter, I got it Saturday, I totally forgot about it, but in Parent Square, I don't know who sent it out, sent us the things, and it was going today, so my daughter got her shots. So it does help out.
Cool.
Parent Square does help out, so that would, I know I got one for about this meeting, like, several weeks ago. Maybe shout out a little bit more. I know it was on Facebook and everything, but I know several people that do not do Facebook or things like that. But Parent Square, the only thing I remember about the shot thing was because of Parent Square.
Good. I'm glad to hear a positive story come out of that. Parent Square's been really great for us, if you have been involved with that. Sometimes we overuse Parent Square, so, you know, I, as you get into other, as you have kids in other buildings, you're getting, you know, six, seven Parent Square messages a day, and we're having to show you how to funnel all that into an easier-to-use package, but that's been a really cool tool for us to use. It's been good. So I appreciate hearing that. It's nice.
I just want to say that I appreciate coming tonight, hearing you speak, and I'm certainly willing to give you a chance. I think we've hired the right person for the superintendent. We've had some very good superintendents in the past, and we've had someone that has not been as well. But I think, you know, you're a little behind the eight ball, you're going to have to really get at it to get this done, so press on.
Sure. Well, thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks for coming. I don't want to close down if you're still wanting to chat, but I'm not seeing anybody racing up. Again, I appreciate so much your willingness to come out and, and provide some feedback. This is not going to be the last of these opportunities, so we're going to really try and make this kind of a regular process, where we're looking for feedback from the community. I do want to point you to one resource. If there was something that you felt you wanted to get out today that you weren't unable to, that you were unable to, or that you, you didn't want to mention maybe in a big group, we've got a survey link on the main Wauwasee homepage, that it's called Listen and Learn Survey. You can click on that link, and it asks your affiliation to the school, to what school. It asks parent, staff member, community member, et cetera. It's, it's not a, it's an anonymous survey, but then it has the four questions, so you can provide feedback and input that way. I really appreciate your time. It's 10 to 8, and this was, this was a great meeting, so thank you so much. All right.